Everybody ready to go? It's 5:15. It is May 17th. We're in council chambers. I will call a meeting to order. Jane, if you do roll call.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Here.
Blatt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
Thank you.
Looks like everybody's present. Everybody's gotten a copy of the agenda and time to look it over. I don't think there's any additions, subtractions. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Blatt.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we will see, you can state your conflicts along the way if you have any for tonight's meeting as they present themselves. On the consent agenda, number of items there, minutes of the May 3, 2022, council meeting and the May 11 special meeting we had last week, work session. The claims list, 1266, the amount of $100,089.30. Expenditure revenue reports for the month of April 2022. Police statistical report, the month of April 2022. A renewal application for the lounge, Class C liquor license, outdoor service, Sunday service. A new application, I think new ownership out of the Buck Snort for Class C liquor license, outdoor service, and Sunday service. Is there a motion for those items on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number three, the public hearing now, looks like the time and place regarding the amendment of FY 2021, 2022 city budget. Do we have things to discuss for that? Is that just, we just need to state we're having a hearing?
We can discuss whatever you guys want. I did put together a revenue amendment and expense amendment that kind of is kind of a cheat sheet for, to break down all these numbers and put a reason with why the number, you know, why we're amending and what the reason was, how much it is. And they all tie out, so your revenues will tie out to this revenue number and your expenses will tie out to this expense number. And so I just thought maybe if it's, you know, written down and you can actually see it and review it, it'll make more sense. So does anybody have any questions about any of those amendments?
Just point out that Jane, with the last meeting, was setting a public hearing. We did talk through what the amendments were for, which totaled these numbers. This publication did appear in the paper as required by law. And then, you know, explanation of the changes, which again, in the publication, were at the bottom of the sheet as well as highlight those. And I've not had any comments or feedback in the public and I don't believe City Hall has received any.
Can I clarify like how the HMUP piece rolls in there so people may not be aware how that rolls into our financials?
Yes, so we're required to report the proprietary accounts, which are the enterprise or business accounts of gas, water, electric. And so not their daily expenses, but the proprietary expenses. So we report, they give us their numbers, what their budgeted numbers are for revenues and expenses for each one of those proprietary accounts. And when we go to do our amendment, I always ask if they have anything that they need to amend for. And so I work with them to add that into our numbers. When we're audited, they take into consideration their proprietary numbers. And so if we don't budget and amend their numbers, then our numbers will be off and we're going to get written up for it. So we do include those proprietary revenue and expense numbers. Thank you. And one other thing I wanted to note, this isn't an amendment, but out of our 810 accounts. On the bottom of the expense sheet, there's a green highlighted area. And I just wanted to just let you guys know that those numbers aren't included in here. What they are is 810 capital account numbers. And so those numbers have already been budgeted to be transferred into 810 into capital. And but usually those are included in our budget. These were not. And so they're an amendment, but they're not, they're not a budgeted amendment, but they're an amendment that we wanted to let you guys know because it's other than what was discussed previously. So the well, we did discuss this, but it was paid out of, we're paying that out of 810. And the concrete and gutters for the vets, we're paying that out of 810. And some uniforms out of fire, we're paying out of 810. So those are items that aren't really coming out of our general fund, but they're coming out of our 810. And it's just, I just want to be aware of it so you're up to date on what's going on.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments about that? So we don't need a motion or anything?
Just to close the hearing.
Just to close the hearing, right? There's no roll call on there.
Unless you got anyone else here that?
Yeah, anybody else?
I guess to comment about that, what we're doing, I guess, as far as the budget. Jane, all right, I'd ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Then I think this next two things I think tie into that, the Resolution 2494, amending the FY 21, 22 annual budget by adopting Budget Amendment Number One. Which is that, that's the revenues?
Correct, that's what we just reviewed.
Yeah, that we just talked about. So is motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Blatt, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Then three is Resolution 2495, approving the unbudgeted transfers stated in the 21, 22 Budget Amendment Number One.
And as these are stated, these are COVID funds that were, the airport received. And we're moving those monies from the general fund to the airport 810 capital savings. And so we'll be able to use those in the future for airport projects that fall under the guidelines of those COVID funds.
Support or match towards those state and federal projects.
And so those weren't budgeted under our regular budget, so that's why they're called unbudgeted transfers. But they're also included in the, in your amendment. It's that 45,000 that's down here under Transfers In and Transfers Out. So it's included.
Jane, motion for 2495.
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Moving on to item number four, under A, because why the crowd has gathered here tonight. Throw along with people that appeared, considering the appointment of council, for a council member seat in Board Number One. We met last week, talked to these two folks. Appreciate you guys, you know, signing the paper and showing up and talking to us. I think that was a great, you know, got some good information. I don't vote, I'm glad I don't because it's going to be a tough decision. I mean, I've done enough of this, whether or not just here or in other places, nobody loses these things. Yeah, somebody's going to be nominated and somebody's not. We appreciate both of you, you know, putting your name in. You know, that's, that's the process that we're a part of. And you put your name out there and people know what you're doing. As far as I was, you know, I think we gathered a lot of good information last week. These guys have had a week to kind of think it over. Part of the process is we're not allowed to sit and talk and gather again. So they just have to think about it and then show up tonight. And I don't know if you guys have any questions about the process, anything else you want to talk about, about what we did and information we got from them last week. It's now be the time and place to do it. If not, you know, then I guess we move on to the next part of it. Were you happy with the process?
Whoever gets the money, it'll be an upgrade from where we were at.
Oh my goodness. It's always got to be one guy. I would say probably, yeah. That seat's been empty over there and that guy hasn't been much over there lately, that's for sure, so.
Mayor, if I may add, I have the pleasure of joining, starting the morning with him at seven o'clock.
Did you? So it's just, yeah, he's not, he's been that way from the get-go, right?
I was not honoring it all.
No, so I was just saying, thank you both for my, I mean, we are thinking about Megan Londo and Kyle Lindberg, you know, the two people that have both put their name in. So I guess at this time, I would ask if anyone in the council would want to make a motion, I guess, to appoint one of those two.
I will make a motion to appoint Kyle Lindberg to fill the vacant Ward One position.
Jane?
I'll second.
You'll second? Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Put me on the spot.
Pardon me?
Put me on the spot.
You're in the hot seat.
Sorry.
Vote.
I'd say nay.
Kroger.
Aye.
Aye.
Blatt. Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
And can I clarify yours?
No.
Okay.
Or was it supposed to be?
I just want to make sure.
No or nay?
A or nay. I mean, I just.
Oh, nay, sorry, nay.
Nay, I just want to make sure I got it correctly. Thank you.
So with that, then that motion carries.
Yes, carries.
So Kyle, you will be appointed to Ward One. And that, as far as I don't know the process, Jane probably knows when, the timing of all that, so.
We will, I will be contacting you to, you'll be sworn in before the next council meeting. Just as a reminder, I just, so this appointment is filling a vacancy. So it fills the remainder of Jay's term, which would be through December 31 of '23. And at that time, that position goes on ballot. And on the ballot for that seat, it will be to fill a vacancy. So it'll be a two-year fill a vacancy since it's been off here. But, and at that time, you know, anybody can run for that seat.
Yeah, because Jay's term goes through '25.
Right, so, but he, but the next city election, it's only to fill a vacancy until the next city election, correct? So, yep.
Thank you.
Well, I can say, thanks again, Kyle, for applying and congratulations. And thanks for applying, Megan. That's just one of those things that, two good candidates and there are lots of other opportunities, you know, for volunteering other places. And like I said, give the guy a run for his money here. He's only got so many months, he gets to sit in his chair and he'll have to prove himself and then you can decide what you want to do. So it's one of those things, I, it's, it's always good to have competition, you know. None of us have ever really turned that down. A lot of these positions, we have to encourage people to do what you guys just did. So thank you again for doing that. Okay, we will move on to number B, action regarding the two-year fuel bid for '22, '23, and '23, '24.
We ask for fuel bids every two years. And we send them out this year to three entities and we only received one bid back. And that was from Agarland FS. And their bid was 14, well, .141 discount off the pump price. And LP of 185 locked-in price.
And this is the current provider as well?
So it doesn't really matter, we've only got one, we can still do what we need to do, correct?
Right.
So motions to approve that?
Right.
And we don't have to turn on the news or look very far to understand the up and down of this. Yet this is off of pump price, so it will adjust based upon pump price. Locking in for long-term contracts is not a prudent financial approach for a public entity. It'd been great if, yeah, a year ago, everyone could predict the future. But even with that, it's not a prudent financial step for even us to contract long-term. Different if you were pregnant.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item C, Resolution Number 2496, authorizing the submission of application for general aviation vertical infrastructure, GAVI program, certifying eligibility requirements to install new power doors for the existing hangars, the airport.
Continued investments, improvements out at the airport. Each spring is when the state grant application process opens. GAVI, which is, this is a program we've utilized in the past. This was just reviewed and recommended as well by the Airport Commission this morning, May 20th, so here in the next few days is when this is due. Once again, this is a pre-application. This is not committing anything. We've had great success with our last two GAVI grants, which we replaced and got power doors on hangar number six. This will be for hangar number three. And again, this was all included in your packet, but just for, to put your optics on aerial, there is hangar number three. It's a seven-door hangar that, and would likely, this would take two grant cycles. And what we saw with hangar number six is the commission has continued to, we bumped up hangar rent prices two times in the last two years. And with power doors and improvements. In addition, there's going to be, which you recently, we applied for and were approved, the nearly over $600,000 taxi lane improvements, as you recall, that'll start possibly this fall now, we just learned this morning. So all great improvements for a vital economic impact facility there. So once again, just reiterate, this is pre-application and we have funds such as the federal monies that can be used toward mass money, our capital savings. So there's still approximately $100,000 in that fund towards our local match. Any questions? But that's more about this pre-application. And kudos going into the Airport Commission.
It's like the biggest hangar down there, probably? I guess those doors have been on there for a while. Is there a motion for Resolution 2496?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Blatt, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven. Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item D is Resolution Number 2497, approving $15,000 donation to Shelby County Health Foundation directed toward the Peterson Wellness Family, Wellness Centers Make-A-Splash
Can they use that for anything or just strictly the pool? They can't put that towards like wages or anything, right?
No, they can only use it for the remodel of the.
Because they're closed right now because they don't have lifeguards.
And our auditor has asked that we get a letter from our attorney. And his opinion, his letter is in your packet also. So as backup, we'll need that when we have our audit. So anyway.
We discussed this through budget time, as you recall, City of Harlan and other entities back in '08, '09, when our wellness center was constructed. All helped with funding at that time. It's, gosh, more than 10 years old and I think we're all like, whoa, we didn't realize a wonderful facility has been there that long. And it definitely has been a definite asset. Yet within the past 12 to 24 months, there's been increased attention from public entities providing money and demonstrating public purpose, all good, all for good reason. And, you know, auditors are looking at it, questioning it, and, you know, which we talked about, and is also the reason for having attorney opinion on as well. I did happen, I sat in at the end of the board supervisors meeting this morning and I know they made an initial recommendation of approximately $50,000 of county ARPA money towards this project as well. The request came out last fall, late last fall. And again, we've talked about it a few times through budget and working through all the other mechanisms to this. That's why as we're looking at amendments and before end of year is to support this. And again, the attorney letter and about the resolution of the case is due to its economic benefit towards the community. And if you have any questions about it, I'll play a chance to read all the information and as well as previous discussions.
We felt it was an appropriate time to make this kind of a donation because it's out of our Economic Development Fund. And since the southwest Iowa, or Shelby County Community, the chamber office, since that was sold, we aren't paying those bills anymore. So we have that available. And so it, it just made sense that we could do that, so.
Like the other thing we talked about, this pool is recirculated its own water. So if we could not possibly open our own pool, that would be an option for potential public use, right? I know it's something, I know it's not really advertised that way, but I know it was brought up with the management up there. If there was, got to that bad of scenario, that's a potential work around or agreement to support where the public could go swimming. So benefit to have both an indoor and outdoor option. Yeah, right.
Anything else? Questions, comments? Is there a motion for that Resolution 2497, on donation?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
City administrative report.
Hold on to your seats and hats, folks.
Is there a video or just pictures or just commentary?
Wind.
Wind.
That's right. I guess, Kyle, welcome, as you'll get sworn in later and echo what the mayor's comments were for both Megan and yourself. So look forward to working with you in this capacity. In addition, big, big announcement and decision over the past week with our utility board of trustees. And congratulations to Joe Rouschenberg is the handoff will transition from Ken Weber. And I do see that Ken's on the line. And so congratulations to Joe and certainly myself, my office and the city team will be supportive and working through this transition and into the future. So change is good. And again, we'll make sure we'll have some comments from Ken, but wanted to start off with referencing that. Other, some project updates, sampling of a few other things. The Apron Rehab Project, one of another project at the airport that is over half complete, 22 of the 40 working days after today would be 24 of the 40 working days. They'll be doing the final two pours of concrete tomorrow and Thursday, assuming they didn't get too much precipitation out there. And all, all that project has gone well. In your packet, just pull it up as well, but with our nutrient reduction feasibility study that was required, that we did receive acknowledgement back from the DNR, that that has been approved and received. And this was from Ben Hooker at the DNR. And the study that was determining our, for nitrogen phosphorus and that this permit would be good through June of 2027. Once again, every five years, we're required to do a feasibility analysis and update, analysis and update. So that that permit is current and that feasibility study has been received by the DNR. The, at the state level, so this is the time of year, is, you know, session is closed. There are a number of bills that, you know, the league has been monitoring on our behalf. And one of those that did get signed by the governor was the business property tax credit, which is now shifting to and across the board for industrial and railroad properties, industrial, commercial railroad properties. And across the board, $150,000, excuse me, $150,000 essentially assessment exemption. So net, net of that is that by, right now, a business property, you file a tax credit and get a credit on your tax statement. This will simply be an exemption on valuation, $150,000 off the top. What's the impact there? That the projection is by 2029 or 2030, so another seven, eight years, that, so for the next eight or nine years, the state has guaranteed that there'll be a backfill process. So maybe a little tongue in cheek when you hear the word backfill, that it's sustainable at least through 2030. And there's an intent to support that after 2030. I, myself and peers and maybe would ask that we talk further over the next coming years. We'd sent letters, I'd talked to Schultz and Holt. It's not a near term, it's a midterm in seven or eight years, how this impacts local property taxes. Is it shifting more to the residential property tax owner? So that got signed by the governor. And again, it's not a right now, yet it is, you know. How is that going to help rural and shifting more to the residential? So if you haven't seen that, it'll come out in the league magazine as well if you've not been seeing those updates. The pool is full. Lifeguard orientation is tomorrow evening. And any of you can sign up and apply to be lifeguards. There are, we'll know after tomorrow night and over the next few days, the final lifeguard number count. That's not unusual, yet our numbers are down. We've all been aware of that. We're, we're not alone, but that doesn't make it okay, in my opinion. So stay tuned for any updates there. If we need to make adjustments in terms of areas of the pool that are open, the slide area, the bulkhead area, what indoor times of day, based upon staffing, we'll keep, we'll keep everyone updated on that. Just heard last night, the, on KSOM, that the Atlantic Parks Department is, just their meeting yesterday, they're shortage and the ability for them, either the staff, it sounds like they'll open it, but similar situation, they have to reduce hours or areas. Avoca, hearing some chatter in the last 24 hours about Avoca scenario. We know what's happening in Omaha. So more to come on that. Blessed that we're here, I mean, the pool's full, you know. But, so if you know folks on the fence considering it, we still can have lifeguards, or more lifeguard applications would be welcome. A little more on that after tomorrow evening. The City of Atlantic also is doing a $500 retention bonus at the end of the summer for, if you stayed through the whole season. So lots of different things happening in terms of recreation for, outdoor recreation for pools. We'll keep you up to date on that. And any questions, concerns, or thoughts as this unfolds over the next few weeks, as always, give me a call or shout.
Are we thinking or have we talked with, you know, Richard's question about the Peterson Wellness Center being short lifeguards as well? Or have we had any conversations about sharing?
Not recently.
The lifeguards?
Did earlier, but nothing recent. And I wasn't aware that they were not open right now due to lifeguard situation.
Starting Saturday. Starting Saturday.
Okay.
Just curious. That was even an opportunity.
I think some already do work both places at times, since they're certified.
And a final couple of closing items. This Friday, weather permitting, which I, weather. This Friday, weather permitting, which, weather Friday is good, is for the first high school baseball and softball, will take place at JJ Jensen, this week we had two additional part-time staff begin at JJ, so staffing in the facility is looking very good down there. As a reminder, so, whoops, wrong photo, this will be again, being communicated on social media tomorrow, we'll get it out to the media as well, you know, a change which you all approved here this winter, based upon some other community stakeholders, to improve safety around the JJ complex, no parking on both sides, so that's the red, and then clearly indicating where there are parking options, and the new parking complex is right, just off of Cyclone, they're doing some final grade work and placement of parking bumps or stops, and that, I drove by this afternoon, it's shaped up quite nice, so, identifying parking areas, but there will be no parking on both sides, last for the school to push this out as well, but it'd be exciting to, I know there's driving a lot of activity down there with youth, and practices, and ballgames, and weekends, and soccer, and it'll really kick off this Friday night with high school programs. Any comments or questions there, or things additional we should be thinking about? Okay. Just a few show and tell here, recently, again, we have monthly training, some involves all, some do not, some involve all staff, some do not, this was our recent safety training with bloodborne pathogens, hazardous materials training, so we had approximately 20 staff, just create, continue to create and remind that safety awareness and safety culture. That took place, and then a few photos, if my screen will work quickly, there we go. The city hall parking lot is complete, significant improvement, it's not been cleared for opening yet until the concrete cures, it may be tomorrow morning, yet, just a few photos here, the subgrade was pretty soupy, quite soupy, and this can show you was a removed concrete right along the buildings for that area, and then I think this, here's a pile of just, it's soupy, that ended up being hauled off, share this with you as well, and let the public know and others, that the feedback from the contractor, as well as our engineer and inspectors, were just hats off to the cooperation, collaboration from our community, our public work staff, and they said they haven't worked in the community, it's just made stuff happen. For example, with, we happen to have the stockpile of millings, so we, with the soupy excavation, which you want to stabilize the subgrade, we immediately were able to use some of our millings, we had GeoGrid available to, for the entrance and exit, had some other aggregate to help with, as far as putting conduit in the ground, we had our street staff out there, which, instead of doing a change order, so just tremendous cooperation, can't highlight that enough, and then if we fast forward to, so this is getting to the last couple sections, and again, 10-point, did a wonderful job with this, and then there's essentially the final look, and needed for a decade or more, and with a full concrete replacement, definitely was, we knew the best long-term, and appreciate your support on that change order. And I have the last item, which is, at 5:20 yesterday, not 5:10, or not 8:00 in the morning, but at 5:20 yesterday, which was 23 hours and 55 minutes before the amendment deadline to an agenda, received notice from the DOT, so the next council meeting, you will have in front of you the fourth time of approving the same plan, but updated advertising for the welcome signs.
Yay!
Could have had a minute of that for today, but we didn't get notice until 5:20 yesterday. That's all I have on this, you have comments or questions? As I, be happy to, that'd be one of the first times we can update on Kyle's DOT and welcome signs.
You'd be working on it for years.
Seven years.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Just looking at the picture of the safety training, perhaps we need to add lifeguard training to that.
Yes, they go through, so-
They have theirs tomorrow.
Orientation and training every year includes a-
Group of people.
Oh, I see.
It's a joke, never mind.
I can get it now.
Never mind.
But she's really saying those are paid salaries, she'd like to also serve as a lifeguard.
Look, it'll be lifeguard, too.
Want those guys to get their swim gear, that's what you're looking at there, Sharon?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Jane, for those updates, my report's pretty short and sweet, I'll just welcome Kyle again, welcome to the, the team, the family up here, it gets unofficial, but there is a council mentoring program, four of the five members up here qualify, or if you figure out which one doesn't qualify, to help, just talk to me afterwards if you want to get a name or two or something.
I'll teach you all the good stuff.
But no, welcome, so, and I would say, you know, congratulations to the graduates in Harlan, surrounding communities, I know Harlan happened last weekend, I'm guessing Avoca, Irwin, Elkhorn, all those schools.
Lot of surrounding towns.
Yeah, so it's a busy time of year for a lot of people, that, you know, families and friends, that people coming and going, security show off our city, so those are good times for a little more traffic in the area, which is always a good thing, so, well now, I don't really have anything, you know, move on to HMU, Ken Weber, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, all right, well, Gene, so my thunder about the new CEO, so just add a couple details to that, his scheduled start date is 7/1/2022, and I should say that's when he will be taking over as CEO, he's going to start working on June 6th, so we'll have a few weeks together, kind of familiarization, that type of thing, and then he'll officially take the reins on 7/1. The, some of the things that we've had going on, he already attended a water meeting yesterday, we had the three engineers on the status of the raw water project, and we found out that the delay, we had understood there was going to be funding last fall, when the feds announced some of their infrastructure stuff, but they actually did not make the funds available until this past Saturday, so that's been the delay on getting our letter acquisitions for the water project that McClure is running with, again, trying to get that as soon as we can. The schedule right now, we haven't received a permitting yet for the new wells, but we anticipate we will through the summer, so the bid date has moved from June till probably August, but we still are looking to get a completion date prior to next summer, and that would be all of the piping, four new wells, and all the electric in SCADA and everything else that goes along with that. The other thing that's going on, or should be coming up in June, we'll work with Todd to schedule a capacitor visit at the HMU, kind of as a welcome for Joe coming in, and so we'll get word out as that information becomes available. Other than that, we're gearing up for some of our summer maintenance and that type of activity, so we'll be busy through the summer. Are there any questions?
No, doesn't look like it, Ken.
Okay, one thing to add, since the question came up back on the budget amendment, what was amended on the HMU side was, we increased electric revenue expenses by $500,000, mainly due to additional sales in the MISO from our LGS plant, as well as some additional transmission revenues, and then on the gas side, higher than budgeted sales on the gas side, roughly $300,000, and along with that goes the cost of gas, and gas prices will be higher this winter than they have been in the past, so, those were the items that HMU submitted to the city for the budget amendment.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
You're right, thank you.
Yep. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, being adjourned.